But they don't know any, so you might not.
I'm just gonna ask Jaycee.
All right, it's 5:30. We'll go ahead and call the June 19th, 2023 council meeting to order, agenda, or roll call, I mean.
Carmen.
Present.
Buska.
Yes.
Fortune.
Here.
McConnell.
Yes.
Kreener.
Present.
Next is the consent agenda, and that includes approval of the agenda, approval of claims, approval of minutes from June 5th, 2023, approval of special Class C retail alcohol license BW with outdoor service to Atomic Pizza Pub LLC, DBA Atomic Pizza Pub, expanded outdoor service area for music events July 13th, 2023, and for August 10th, 2023, and approval of owner-occupied housing contractor request payment number one, final, for $53,879 for Dave Langrick-Dave's home improvement.
So moved.
Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Next is staff reports, Public Works.
The street department has started chip ceiling, and they're starting with the areas that they skipped last year. They are planning to go back to three loads this year, just so we can catch back up. They've also started painting around town, so you'll see Aaron out kind of early. There might be some spots around town that'll be closed off for a little while. Then they removed the concrete on Second Avenue West. They're still waiting on the pipe and the structures for that storm sewer project, but when they get that stuff, it's a dig-ready project, so they'll have it done pretty quickly. Then the wastewater facility aeration basin project is done, and everything went well. They're planning to do the second one this fall. Then, just a quick reminder, the Seventh Street project is scheduled to begin this week, and the downtown project will begin July 5th with work starting in front of the courthouse.
Okay.
So when you say that the retention basin is done, what, do you mean dug, or what?
No, the wastewater aeration basin.
Oh, okay, okay, sorry.
Next, police report, Jim?
No.
Nothing to report. Three, administration?
Just reminded that the July council meetings will be the 2nd and 4th Mondays, so it'll be July 10th and the 24th. We've been busy getting ready for fiscal year end. We're getting quotes for the combined strategic and comprehensive plans. We may do some presentations next meeting. And also, the Parks Department received a donation for some musical playground equipment over at East Park from the Tina Elwood Gerky in memory of our mom Carol Elwood.
And that was a donation for what?
Like some musical, to play drums and stuff. If you drive by, you'll see it. It's right by the jungle gym.
Cool, cool. Committee updates.
Fitness center meeting I had this following week. Basically, they are moving ahead. They put an end to paper to replace Wendy, so that was in the papers. They also are moving ahead to the 24/7. They did not get the grant, but they're moving ahead with the equipment. They've ordered that, and they still are going to redo the front end, you know, so it can be locked up. The other part, too, is which I think I'm gonna bring in front of this group, is they're looking at getting an architect or somebody to start with their their design. I actually think that we should probably be looking at that instead of their group that's in charge of moving ahead with the new building. We should be in front of that. I think we should be looking at the ones trying to hire that.
And that's a design to replace the existing gym?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
I think I would agree with that, because it's our building.
Right, right. When we started the theater addition, do you remember what gardeners charged us to come up with the initial?
Was it 30,000 or 40,000? I know the last one was 70,000 for Stage Two.
Was how much?
Stage Two was 70,000.
And was that an update for the grant, or was it something different?
That was an update for the grant and further work to get.
Ready to go out for bids?
Yeah, basically ready to go out for bids, plus then it gave us the opportunity to have like a building front-type packet that we could put together to possible donors.
But you think the original one?
I'm not 100% certain, but I want to say it was in the $30,000 range, but I could be wrong. It's been so long.
I know.
Reason I ask is so at least we have an idea of what could be expected if that's what they choose.
I would guess minimum $150,000.
Just to get the original drawings?
Be my guess.
Well, I mean, we want to have a specialist in gyms. That can't be everyone who knows how to design gyms.
Everything that we wanted included in it, too, because if we're gonna put a new building up, we'd want it so it's efficient and really efficient and everything.
And if it helps, I can get, it's Brian Stark is who we used for the theater, and I can pass that contact information on to whoever. They've been great to work with.
You might want to look at a couple different options, somebody that specializes in fitness.
Think maybe who's doing the school now, and I don't know who that is, but.
Well, I'm thinking more of like a fitness center. You know, I mean, that's different than just building a gym or just building, just a building.
Right.
I think you would need somebody with a lot of ideas on how to make it.
So to that point, then, if the fitness center would want to go ahead and start this process, would the first step be hiring or taking, I don't know if bids is the right word, but going out to many, or a few architects or engineers and getting?
The committee has been working, and they're gonna need a plan, because they're gonna need something to start with. What do you want in there? You can't just ask an architect to build something without telling them.
No, I know, but I mean, would the first step be to get quotes from a couple different ones on what they would charge?
Well, I think the first thing is figure out what they want, and then they go out.
And try and get.
I would get at least three quotes from different architects.
Well, not only quotes, but qualifications.
Right. Because for proposals, that includes qualifications and past experience. Ultimately, the council would approve the contract, but I personally think you have the committee, and that's, the committee is who's gonna do most of the work with it.
Right.
I don't know.
Because that's what we did. That's, we had the scene shop committee that had two members from the council, Jan and myself, two members from CCT, and two members from the Theater Commission, working together to basically establish the process, and then go out and work through everything, and then win this grant yet. That's when we really got in.
That's why I think it's important. Don't we have two people, two council members on that committee?
I'm on the committee.
And there should be somebody else, too. I know at one point, we had two people. I'll have to look back and see who's on it.
I mean, it's like there should be check-in steps. So the group, the committee or whoever, talks about what they want out of it, because you're, I mean, you can't just go to an architect and say, "We need a gym." And then they come to the council, and the council, and probably the park board, and the council says, "Yeah, we agree with it. Now, go forth."
Yeah, make sure it's not too elaborate with that day line.
Do the next step. I mean, because I'm sure we all have kind of an idea of how much, you know, 10 million is too much, and 1 million is too little, or?
I think what they have, Amy, is they got one committee that's, that they have their idea, and then they present their idea to the, you know, the park board, which basically just, you know, they agree with them, whatever they're doing. And, you know, when they're on, they're trying to discuss some of this stuff with them, but they don't have an idea what they want. There's no idea. I mean, they're talking about, it's two gyms, two basketball courts, a.
I mean, you're right that.
Pickleball court. I mean, I mean, this is all what they want. In their mind, this is the stuff they want, because they're taking it from their group of people that are in this group, and then they're going around to the community, which is usually, it's a younger, a younger bunch, and basically, everything that they want, you know, is quite a bit. I think we need two active council members on that committee from the get-go, so they're in on the very initial planning, so.
And I think we need, I think Rich is right, that we need a decision point to come to the council and say, "Yeah, we like that plan. Go ahead and keep planning." I mean, because in the end, it is the city's money.
Half of it.
Okay.
They'll all be responsible for it all. Whether they can donate, or get donations, that's great, but we're the ones that sign the agreements, and we'll be responsible for the cash.
If it's a $2 million project, and we have to raise a million, do we have, are we in the spot to do that?
I think they're thinking already that the certain donor is probably gonna go up to 1.75 or 2 million, and in the rest, the city's supposed to match it. So that's why I'm still kind of thinking from the group, I'm kind of confused here yet, because what do I say back to them? Go and get your design together, because right now, their designs, which I have brought in here, and they're, they're really not, where do you move from there? Because every time that I go back, there's more stuff added, which I know that we, I don't think, we haven't even come to the part where they're gonna do anything with the pool.
So maybe the first question would be if, if the city is expected to pay 1 million or 2 million, is that an option? And I, like today, it'd probably be really, really hard, if doable at all.
Right, because what I did say to them last week was, would you have anything that would think about the old building, which I had a discussion today with Michelle, in which we basically look at that as, it's gonna be a million just to tear the building out, I think, with all the asbestos and concerns with the building, because people in the city don't want the building gone, some of them.
Sure.
But, I mean, how much can you stick in an old building, though, too?
Yeah.
To make it efficient. It probably, it'll never be a efficient building. I don't know if it'll be a million to take it down, but it'll be at least, would we get that quote for 600,000, just to fix the HVAC, and that's not doing anything extra. So you're looking at at least a half a million just to get a heating system in there. That was two years ago, too. Still with no air conditioning and no. So I mean, everything that we had in there, we talked about. I think, Amy, you actually are the other one on the committee with me.
Oh, okay.
Um.
I've been known about any meeting.
That's what I was gonna say, too, but I don't, I can't remember for sure. I'll discuss that with you afterwards, but I know, I know what happened there.
I'm happy to do it, but at first, I have to know about the meetings.
Right, and I mean, I don't think they're expecting to start breaking ground next summer even, maybe, but, I mean, that is probably a question for us to answer first, is if they do need a million dollars, are we in a position to give them that money, or to promise that money? And I'm not sure we are.
And we'll probably be on the hook for the initial architect just to come up with the plan, so we have to be willing to spend 100,000, 200,000, whatever that's going to be, before we can even go fundraise, because until you have the project, you have the plans. Right. I think there needs to be a lot more community response to this before we commit to anything, because there's gonna be people screaming at the top of their lungs about tearing that building down. You know, I mean, stand straight, square is probably not the most efficient use, but what you want, what you need sometimes, you're.
Right.
On the other hand, people were really upset about the waterworks building.
Yeah.
And nobody has said a thing to me in the last five years.
Sure.
Well, the only thing is, I know that some of the board was giving names for Brandon to contact, and I just thought, before he goes out and starts contacting, gets something going, I think we better be the ones out in front of it, instead of making contact with people unless we know that that's what we want. And you guys are right. They need to know first what they're gonna, what they want in the building, because what I've heard the last couple times, it's like, holy crap. I mean, pickleball courts in there, or which, you know, are they gonna use them during the summer? Probably not. Be outside, so batting cages, racquetball.
I don't know if racquetball is still a thing?
Yeah.
I'm just throwing out all the stuff.
Yep. No, and I understand, I mean, that's, it's, I guess, part of it, too.
I still think there needs to be, I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I mean, still think there needs to be, they need to go out and get more people joining the place first, because our membership is just floating around, 687 to 718, which isn't gonna clear them out of the red each month.
Right.
I suppose some of the argument is, if they have more things like the pickleball court, then more people will join.
Right. But that's why we put money in the pickleball court down the south end of town. What's our tennis level? Do we have any idea of the use of that pickleball courts down there? Is there any tracking numbers? Well, they're, each night, there's somebody down there.
There's pretty, I don't know if good size is the right term, but there's probably, what would you guess, 20, 30 people that play?
Yeah, there's a pretty good.
Regularly?
And they say it'll be better once Nate fixes the lights.
I'm gonna fix the lights.
Well, who does it then?
They're getting quotes from.
Park court.
There's some money left in the pickleball fund, so they're getting some quotes.
I know here, or this area, it seems like pickleball is, is maybe 40 to 50 years-old people and older, but I know in Des Moines, it's all ages, and I'm guessing that's, you know, eventually what's probably gonna happen, I hope. So, you know, hopefully, that grows too, but back to where we started, I guess, we probably need to decide if we can commit anything to it in the next three years as a city, because we've got a pretty big couple bills coming up here.
And I don't think they have anything in the budget for an architect.
Yeah.
So their First Amendment, we'd have to discuss that if we wanna.
Yeah.
But the other thing, those boilers are not gonna last forever, so over these days, they are gonna.
They're gonna crap.
Crap. Right, in the middle of winter, so. And kind of standing by my word, I always said that if we had to stick the money into it now, the old building would be staying.
Yeah. Any other comments on that, or thoughts, if not? Any other committee updates? Any comments from the audience? Nobody's here. We'll move on to regular business. Number one, the public hearing for budget amendment, number three, fiscal year, or fiscal year ending June 30, 2023.
There were no written objections.
Okay. Close the public hearing. And number two, resolution amending the current budget for fiscal year ending June 30, 2023, as last amended on 3/20 of 2023.
So moved. Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number three, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an industrial sewer user wastewater services agreement.
And I hope everybody saw, I did send out just minor revisions to the agreement than what we had looked at last council meeting. Basically, it's where the testing can be done and the sampling can be done if we observe issues. I think I'll be honest, I kind of made a statement earlier. I think I made a mistake, because they've been out of spec how many times since our meeting? They've had four violations since our last meeting. They're not doing a very good job of trying. I mean, I think I'd have to change my vote right now until they change.
Well, wait a minute. If we don't approve the agreement, the old agreement lapses.
For a year, Amy. I think we need to go 90 days or something, because they gotta show that they're, they're gonna try, and I don't think they are. When they started out, their original statement was, "It's better for them to pay the fines than to do something about it." I mean, how are we gonna?
That was in regards to pH. Their violations is tied to three fog and one TSS.
To me, fog is worse. It gets in our, gets in our pipes and it hardens, or worse. We're gonna be taken apart.
But they have, the surcharges did not change for that. The only thing that you lowered the last time was the pH violations.
We lowered the amount of the.
Correct, yeah.
And just so we're on the same page, the current contract ends this month?
Yes, June 30th.
June 30th, yeah. And if we don't approve what we have in front of us, then we'd have to meet again before the end of the month? Or what?
Well, the attorney did not recommend just extending it. I guess I don't know why we would not approve it tonight. I guess I, I'm confused as to why it would not be approved tonight by the council.
Well, I think what we put in there about where we're gonna measure the fog and make sure that that's accessible to us in a timely fashion, I'm fine with it the way it is. And then, but I really did like the attorney's suggestion that the next time we work on it, that we talk about grading the fines. I really thought that was a great idea.
And his suggestion was, you know, if you have three consecutive fines within a certain period of time, then the fines would increase, so the number of violations would also affect the amount of the fines.
So that would be like the three fog in the last.
Yep.
What about the wording about the testing at that A station? They don't want, they want that taken out?
That's what brought this whole thing about, was they were questioning that. But like we discussed, I mean, we have to leave that in there, because currently, it pretty much says the only place we can test for them would be inside the facility. If they have an upset condition, they close their gate, well, we can't pull anything from it there, because there's no flow. So we, we want to be able to test in our system as well. I'm not saying we go to the west side and pull something there, because they don't have anything to do with that.
The A dump station is the closest.
Correct.
And that serves the least amount of businesses. What, you got the REC, a couple small areas up there, and a few residential?
Right.
So, I mean, they're probably the biggest user of that lift station.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, there's only about four residential. I don't know how many residential, but there's not many. And oftentimes, especially with the fog or the waxy stuff, that's where it accumulates, is in that first lift station, because that's where it's settling, you know, before it gets pumped out. So we, that's oftentimes what needs to be cleaned, and they have had to clean it in the past. So we wanted to make sure that was included in the wording, so. I mean, I think we gotta stick, stick to a tough schedule with that out there. I mean, we're already, EPA has been in the community twice on that. We're, the DNR is, I mean, we're probably at the top of the list for violations on sewers, and I mean, it's drawing attention out there.
Yeah, and I am happy with the way this agreement reads right now. I'm good with it. Now, next, if you want to do something with surcharges at that point in time, by all means, but the way the agreement reads now, I'm pleased with it.
That's a year from now, though, right?
Yep.
We're kind of obligated, because you've already voted to reduce the fines. I mean, with my persuasion, I would go back to the original contract and read the way it is, and that's it. But we voted on it, so it has to stay at this point, but outside of that, the original contract is in place then.
Correct.
Until the end of the month.
Right. The only thing that was changed would be.
The amount of the fines.
Right, the amount of the surcharge, plus where we can test now.
And then we added.
Yeah.
And the amount of the fine for the pH, was that the only one?
Correct.
Yeah.
So all the other surcharges stayed the same?
And we even added, if it was for a long period of time, we added a stricter pH, so that they do correct it and not just say, "Well, we're gonna stay out of compliance all day long," so we made that stricter.
I think we've made some good improvements that Mike has wanted and Nate has wanted. And while I agree with Rich that they're not exactly demonstrating great, you know, involvement here, let's put it in place for a year. We have an idea, so we have some good suggestions for next year, and, because I want a contract in place at the end of the month.
Would it be an option to do this one for six months, or is that not something you want to consider? Just to see where they land, or how they, things go? Just throwing it out there.
I think we talked about that last time, and we decided not to do that. I don't remember what the reasoning was, but.
Concern, concerns me if they had four violations in the last two weeks.
What are they telling us? What's causing the violations?
I have no idea.
They don't?
It's just our random grabs of the fog. They had two out of compliance on dailies, which put them out on the monthly, so.
Well, if you're fine with it, Nate and Michelle, then I'm fine with it, too. So I'm gonna say, I'm gonna make a motion to go ahead and do it.
For the year?
Yep. I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded. Roll call?
McConnell?
No.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
No.
Buska?
Yes.
Motion carried. Number four, resolution.
Although I would add that they might express to them that we're kind of upset. And three to two is about as tight as it gets around.
Right.
Number four, resolution appointing computer share, computer share of St. Paul, Minnesota to serve as paying agent. Note registrar and transfer agent approving the payment agent, and note registrar and transfer agent agreement, and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
I'll make that a motion. I'll second.
I don't know if I got them all right.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number five, resolution approving and authorizing a form of loan agreement, and authorizing and providing for the issuance of $4,600,000 general obligation capital loan notes, series 2023, and levying a tax to pay said notes. Approval of the tax exemption certificate and continuing disclosure certificate.
I make that motion.
Second.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Number six, resolution authorizing transfer funds for fiscal year 2023.
So moved. Second.
Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Number seven, resolution committing fund balance resources for general funds and special revenue funds, GASB 54.
Yes.
So moved. Second. Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Number eight, recommendation of boards and commissions to appoint members for a term of three years, expiring June 30, 2026. A, oops, do you want me to read them? Yeah. A, Airport Commission to reappoint Brian Schmidt. B, Airport Commission to reappoint Rick Savern. C, Park Board to reappoint Justin Denner. D, Park Board to reappoint Dave Harold. E, Theater Commission to reappoint Dave Gosh, David Gosh, I'm sorry, and F, Theater Commission to reappoint Julie Wilson.
So moved.
Second.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Number nine, recommendation of the Theater Commission to appoint Steve Licktag for
a term expiring 6/30 of 2025 to replace John Hyatt.
So moved. Second.
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
And the last item on the agenda, number 10, approval of permit for supervised display of fireworks for Corey Culverston, 212 Royal Oaks Drive on 7/1, 2023, and 7/2, 2023.
And the fire chief has signed up on something that close to other houses?
He was stopping in today. I don't know if he, you know, looked at it, so I'm not sure if he, I sent it to him, and I've not heard back from him. And the ones that you want to shut up, shoot off are the consumer fireworks.
Just state-purchased consumer fireworks, yeah. I mean, I originally went through the EPA to go through the display operators.
You want to step up? Yeah, step up here and turn the mic on there, please. Thank you. I think there's a button on the back there.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yeah, it's more for the camera, but yeah. It's up there in the ceiling, yeah.
So, well, my name is Corey Culverston. I'm new in town. I've been here for about a year. My wife and I moved down here, so understood that in order to fire off fireworks, which we thought were gonna be purchased fireworks outside of the state, and it was just new that I understood Iowa sold like these different types of fireworks, like the mortar fireworks. So we went through this course and learned some of these things, and then I passed the test that was required for doing an actual display. But we're not, we're not going crazy with a big display. We just wanted the ability to maybe fire off fireworks on Saturday or.
But we're not, we're not going crazy with a big display. We just wanted the ability to maybe fire off fireworks on Saturday or Sunday. And it sounds like the city is approving for Monday and Tuesday with that family coming in. So I was going to just purchase fireworks in town and maybe do a, a small display for families. So that was what the request was.
Okay. Have you talked to your neighbors around there? People from, I mean?
Yeah, so we're on the backside, right? That's two twelve and there's the few, there's the cornfields all ag on the other side. So I have talked to my neighbors on the sides and they're okay with it. And obviously we'll be respectful of them if they, if there's problems, then we're not going to, we thought, we're not going to continue to bother people. So.
Is it your intention just at dusk?
Yeah.
Half hour, forty-five minute type thing?
Yeah, yeah. Just like a window of time and as it gets dark, that's all we're going to do. And I'm sure other, I'm just trying to do it the right way. I don't want to go through like, just, you know, lighting off fireworks, having, you know, police come and, you know, get bothered about it. So I'm just trying to do it the right way. We may just end up doing them on Monday or Tuesday if it's really that much of a problem, but that's why I, I went through the right avenues to try to see if you guys are okay with it.
The one thing Neil mentioned was if it remains dry, they may put a fire ban on. They're going to be looking at that. So just depending on the rain situation, we may, if you approve this, we may need to contact the other ones and we may not allow it if it's a real drought. We'll have to just see what.
That would be a statewide fire ban?
Could be county.
I think a county.
Countywide?
I think he's working with the county on that.
There's been grass fires around lately, which is really unusual this time of year. But they have been and.
I guess in Howard County, you said Protivan, well, somebody had seven tenths and some people had two inches. So I mean, it kind of varies within the county, but they are really evaluating it based on that.
I showed a half inch yesterday, right? Yeah.
Three tenths.
Three tenths, yeah.
Corey, and, and you bought the lot behind you, correct? So you own all the way to Twelfth Avenue? That's correct. So you have that extended lot there? That's correct. Yeah. And I'm assuming that's where you would be lighting them off is from that lot? That's correct. Yeah. Yeah. Off of that back gravel road, which is. Yeah, Twelfth Avenue. Yes. Yep.
I mean.
Thanks for clarifying that. Yes.
I think he's well within, as, as much as I don't like fireworks in town, I think Corey's within our rules and I'll make the motion to approve it.
Carmen?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
But I do have a question for the chief. Do you know who had the huge display one night ago or two nights ago in town?
I was wondering.
No, I do not.
I mean, because there were a lot.
In the city limits?
Uh, well, I don't know, but it was a lot. There were a lot of fireworks shot off.
South side, town, north side, which I don't know. I, I wasn't working.
No, I just, I don't know if I did or not, I guess.
Oh, no, there were, there was.
Was that, was that Amy?
Sunday night, Saturday night? I'm not sure. And it was probably about ten o'clock.
I mean, it was just bad.
I heard a plan. Just say, well, that is the season. So.
So Corey tried to do it the right way and come in and get approval versus what other people are.
Thank you.
I don't want to make anybody mad near the town. This is a great opportunity to see all you guys, meet you. So appreciate the work you're doing.
No, thanks for doing that. So we appreciate it too. All right, that was the last.
Talking to your neighbors too.
Yes.
That was the last item on the agenda?
Motion to return. Second. Buska?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
McConnell?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Carmen?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.